We will start with an invocation given by myself, after which a pledge of allegiance given by Marla Young.
Heavenly Father, as we come before the beginning of this commission meeting, we express our gratitude unto thee for the opportunity to live in Box Elder County, to raise our families to work, to have neighbors, friends, and to work together as a society to improve things in our lives and to be the kind of people that thou would have us to be. We're grateful unto thee for the opportunities to serve and pray that thou will help us to be inspired and directed in doing those things that what we do will be beneficial to those who we have an opportunity to serve. We pray this day that thou will send thy Spirit to be with us, to direct us. We pray for those who are in harm's way, whether it be military or whether it's police or fire people or anybody who is serving, that thou will watch over and protect them. We're grateful for our many blessings and ask for these things this day, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Stand to join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, Marla. Now we have the minutes from September 10th, 2025.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from September 10th.
Second?
We have a motion from Commissioner Perry and a second from Commissioner Vincent to approve the minutes from September 10th, 2025. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, item three administrative review reports future agenda items.
I don't have anything.
We already talked about it. I don't think we have anything else right now.
Okay. Former agenda items?
I don't have anything on that either.
Okay. Number five, emergency management issues.
I think we're good right now. We just hope that we don't get more rain than we want this weekend.
Okay. I don't see Shirley in ARPA, L A T C, yeah? Nothing today. Okay. Marla, public hearing, item A, public hearing for agricultural protection area West Corinne.
Can we do them at the same time?
Yes.
Let's do them.
Open up for a public hearing.
Second?
We have a motion by Commissioner Perry and a second by Commissioner Vincent, open public hearing for item seven A and seven B. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, anybody that would like to be involved in the public hearing, you're welcome to come forward, state your name, and address the group. Seeing none?
Seeing none, I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second?
And we have a motion by Commissioner Perry and a second by Commissioner Vincent to close the public hearings for agricultural protection area West Corinne and agricultural protection area Thatcher. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, Marla, we're back to you again.
So your next items, the first resolution is for the ag protection in West Corinne, to approve that, and the second is the ag protection in Thatcher. And then I'm just going to talk a little bit about the third item is a resolution to remove two parcels from an ag protection currently. And statute just basically states if the person asks to be removed, then you grant it.
Okay. Any questions, Commissioners?
I don't have any.
Nope. I'd make a motion that we approve resolution number 2518, which is the Reader West Corinne Agricultural Protection Area.
Second?
And a motion by Commissioner Perry and a second by Commissioner Vincent to approve resolution 25-18 for agricultural protection area in West Corinne, the Reader property. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution 25-19 for agricultural protection area in Thatcher.
I'll second it.
And we have a motion by Commissioner Vincent and a second by Commissioner Perry to approve resolution 25-19 for agricultural protection area in the Thatcher area. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution 2520 petition to remove parcel number 03004 0105 and number 03-004-0106 from agricultural protection area.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Vincent and a second by Commissioner Perry to remove, to pass this resolution 25-20 petition to remove parcel number 03-004-0105 and 03-004-0106 from agricultural protection area. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, we have item nine A, presenting the names for the appointment to the Behavioral Health Advisory Council, Joshua Barson. Come on up, Joshua.
Thank you.
Please state your name.
Joshua Barson from Bear River Health Department. Our health officer, Jordan Mathis, and myself have been working on organizing the Behavioral Health Advisory Council to advise the counties with our interlocal agreement on the area plan and carrying out mental health and substance abuse services. The positions statute or the guidelines for it is that those positions be appointed by the county that they will represent. And Box Elder County is established, set up to have three, three members on, on that council. So I have three, three names that we would like to submit or nominate to be on that council. Would you like me to introduce all three or one at a time or?
One at a time.
Yeah, let's do one at a time.
Okay. And I have their resumes, if you'd like a copy of these.
Yeah.
So these are, I've got one for... So our first, first person is Ashton Benyon, and she lives, she lives in Logan, but she works, and I gotta get my notes out, sorry. She works at, yeah, she works here at Promontory School of Expeditionary Learning. She graduated recently in May with her master's in social work. She has a bachelor's in social work and psychology with a minor in mental health advocacy and awareness. We were impressed with, she's been in the field for about five years, and we were impressed with the knowledge base that she's already built and the, she's been involved in several different mental health agencies, different organizations. So we are excited about her excitement that she has. I think when you're young, younger in the field, there's a little more energy sometimes that can re-energize others.
What, you're saying that old people don't have energy?
Sometimes, right? I mean, I'm only 35, and sometimes I feel it. So, but yeah, we're excited about her as a candidate and think she would bring a good, a good lens to view behavioral health with her work in the schools.
So she lives in Box Elder County or?
Lives in Cache.
Lives in Cache.
Lives in, actually, I just, you know, I talked to Jordan about these three, specifically this one. He asked if we'd be comfortable with this. I felt I was comfortable, and I just said, bring it up and let the Commissioners decide. But this person, because she works here in Box Elder at one of our schools, Promontory Expeditionary Learning School, her passion is for the youth here in Box Elder County, and that was the benefit, is from mental health perspective, she's going to have a perspective of Box Elder County, not Cache. She may live there, but she's going to have our perspective of our students and our young people. And that's why I felt like she'd be a good choice to represent us.
Yeah, she works here. I'm good with that, too.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's the background behind her.
And we, we would like to submit her for a two-year appointment to the, yeah, to the Behavioral Health Advisory Council.
So if we can do them one at a time, I think that way we can cover it. So I'd make a motion that we accept Ashton Benyon for a two-year appointment, as explained.
Second?
And we have a motion by Commissioner Perry and a second by Commissioner Vincent to appoint Ashton Benyon to the Behavioral Health Advisory Council for two years. Is that starting in January?
Oh, yes, thank you, January 1st.
So that'd be two, 26 and 27. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you. Our next person is Michael Crane, and we are very, we are very excited about all three of these individuals. Box Elder County gave us some very good people to choose from and to interview. Michael Crane has worked for adult probation and parole for the last five years. For the last four years, he's served for the Mental Health Court in Box Elder County. He lives in Deweyville. He has a Juris Doctor from, from Duke and practiced for seven years as a, as a judge advocate for the Army. And he also had two years prior to Box Elder County and Weber, serving with their Mental Health Court as well. We're really excited about kind of the lens that he can bring, both perspective for, for our Mental Health Court, for our criminal justice side of things and what people need, need in that population.
His was a four-year, right?
Yes, and his, his would be a three-year appointment.
Oh, three-year?
Yep, beginning January 1st as well. We're staggering the years.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we appoint Michael C. Crane to the Behavioral, Behavioral Health Advisory Council to a three-year term as presented.
I'll second it.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Vincent and a second by Commissioner Perry to approve Michael C. Crane to be on the Behavioral Health Advisory Council for a three-year term, starting January 2026. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries.
And then, and then we have Janelle Jeffries. She's the CEO of Boys and Girls Club of Northern Utah. She's been in that kind of position and in that work for the last 20 years. She has a bachelor's in human development, psychology, and has, has done a lot of work for kind of boys and girls in that, that age in that area in Box Elder County. So we're really excited about her. And she serves in a lot of different kind of councils and has a lot of experience in kind of what we're trying to accomplish with this Behavioral Health Advisory Council. So we're hoping to be able to have her appointed, and she, she said she would be willing to, to be appointed for a four-year, four years on the Behavioral Health Advisory Council.
Yeah, Janelle works with a lot of the nonprofits, does a lot of great things here in Box Elder County, and we'd be lucky to get her on there. So I'll make the motion that we approve Janelle Jeffries to be on the Behavioral Health Advisory Council behalf of Box Elder County for a four-year term.
Second?
We have a motion by Commissioner Perry and a second by Commissioner Vincent to appoint Janelle Jeffries to the Behavioral Health Advisory Council for a four-year term, starting January 2026. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. You take care.
Some really good, quality people there. Thanks. Okay. We are item B, Attorney Steve Hadfield, agreement, grant of trail easement.
This is the culmination of quite a cooperative effort by the Wells family in the county and Willard City to keep the Willard Trail open, in spite of the gravel mining going on up there. This is an easement which moves the trail out of harm's way. As you recall, the agreement, it'll be moved maybe two or three more times before we're all done. But the trail should be safe now and it should be open. My understanding is that Willard has got the signage in place.
There's signs out there already.
Trails is up and going. So this is just the formal easement that gives the county the, the trail.
So is it in the county? It's not in Willard City?
No, the Wells pit is actually in county, is county, and then it connects to Willard's property immediately east of that. And so that's why we're doing this, that's why we've been working this out, is we had to work the Wells family, who is actually leasing the ground to, I can't remember which construction company, to do the excavation, but to keep things safe, that's the reason we had to go through this process. So it's got three different attorneys, our attorney's office, Willard's attorney's office, and the Wells family attorney's office, along with the company, the construction company that has been involved, to make sure it's the safest way possible. The Wells family, I have to say, I'm grateful that they were willing, they, they want to allow people to get into that canyon, but they can't, they don't want to be liable for lawsuits. And Willard has very graciously been willing to come up and help with the enforcement side. We just have to ask, as we do this and take this responsibility, that the public take responsibility and stay on the trail where they belong and don't end up going off where they can get hurt, so.
Both entities have been really good to work with, so.
Can also add that we had Chad, the recorder, look at the grant of easement. He's okay with it, so everything should be okay.
So I'd make a motion that we approve the grant of, the easement, agreement 2574, grant of trail easement to preserve the Willard Canyon Trail.
Second?
We have a motion by Commissioner Perry and a second by Commissioner Vincent to approve agreement 25-74 for the grant of trail easement to preserve the Willard Canyon Trail. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Do we have CJ and Kimberly Roberts here?
You do.
Good.
How you doing?
I'm great.
Good, good.
I'm CJ, this is Kimberly.
You need, you need to be down by the mic, because it's going to get recorded, and our clerk here is going to want to.
We're the Roberts, Kimberly and CJ. And we are here, we're trying to put together a community Christmas activity to be held Sunday, December 14th. We would like to have it at the Box Elder County Fairgrounds, at the indoor arena. It would be free to the public, and we're inviting, we want it to be an interfaith activity, so that we're inviting all of the other religions in the Tremonton area to participate with us. Live nativity, singing, just a gathering of our community at Christmas time.
And the reason, and the reason we're here together is because we are representatives of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, as the Interfaith Council representatives for Greater Box Elder County of Tremonton. And our responsibility is to do just this, try to get our community civically, civically, and also the religious organizations working together in the better common good for the, for all of us.
So we're wondering if, to use the indoor arena, if there could be a fee, fee waiver for this activity?
Is there any concerns with being a religious activity at all? I think so. Do we know what the fees would be?
Uh, we, I don't. We spoke to Jen, and I don't, I don't know.
Okay.
Seems like to me it was, that would be like $400, but I don't remember for sure.
Is it that much for the indoor arena? I can't, I can't remember what. One thing, we probably would need to make sure that you have insurance to cover it. We need to have to, that would probably be, I'd, I'd make a motion, but I'd say you've got to have insurance to cover yourselves there, because when we rent things out, we require a certain insurance policy to be in place. So, because we don't cover the insurance for those activities, if that makes sense. I don't know if that's something you guys...
Okay, so it's not a private activity, it's a community activity.
Okay.
And so what we're trying to accomplish is, with, with what we're doing with the LDS Church, for the LDS Church, is we've, we're talking to all of the different religions within our organ, within our area, and getting the schools and things like that as a part of this activity. So it's not a LDS activity, or Church of Jesus Christ activity, or a CJ and Kimberly Roberts activity. It's a community as it is addressed at the top of that.
Yeah.
It's so, I don't know how we could insure in a community activity where it's not an entity, but it's a organization of many organizations.
Well, our biggest concern is we just don't want to indemnify the county if something happens, right?
Sure.
So we let you use it, but if something happens and somebody gets injured, then they come back to, after the county.
Is there any?
Right, see, essentially what we're doing is we're letting the fairgrounds facilities be used, and wherever that happens, normally we charge, we're waiving the fee for that.
Correct.
But there's still an agreement that needs to be kept and maintained, and that requires insurance, and the rules be followed, and those things. So where there's several involved, I don't know whether the several work together, but there, there will need to be something in place.
And I kind of, and I don't know, you could look around. I can't imagine a policy for one night, I mean, one event being horrible, but yeah, that's just something that, that we would, that we would need to do.
Okay, so one question.
We're all in for doing that, or for having the activity.
Sure. One question pertaining to that. If my family were to have a wedding reception out there, say at, in any of the different buildings?
You'd have to have an insurance policy in your family.
That's what I'm asking. So is it for the community a policy, or for a family policy?
It's probably going to have to be the sponsoring entity, whoever the sponsor, whoever the, whoever's going to be the lead sponsor.
Sponsor the activity.
Probably going to be the one having to get the policy, would be my guess.
Okay. We will look into that, if we can produce that, and we will work on that immediately. Do we need to reschedule this meeting to be able to have this conversation continued?
No.
I'm, I'm happy to make a motion to, to say I would waive the fees if they can, if they can get the insurance paperwork processed for this community-type event, we could waive the fees for this event, as long as they have the insurance and can sign the agreements with the fairgrounds appropriately.
And will we, if we can get that in place, would we give that to Jen? Do we meet that with you? How do we, what's the proper channels?
Just goes back to Jen. Essentially, what happens is you'll need to schedule with the fairgrounds, and as part of that scheduling, there'll, there'll be an agreement that you sign, but there'll be no fee, and that'll have the insurance requirements in there, and you work that out with Jen.
Okay.
Well, I think this, I think, I, I mean, I actually love the, the, I actually love this type of event. I think it's awesome, especially when you get, you know, everybody involved. I think that's really good for our, our community and our county. And if we could get people coming from all over, I think it'd be awesome, so.
Yeah. You might be able to get Commissioner Vincent to sing a song, you never know.
No, people would leave if that, if I started singing, you know, I'll be home for Christmas, people would leave.
So I'd make the motion that we waive the fee, but they need to sign the agreement and have the insurance if, with that.
I'd second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Perry and a second by Commissioner Vincent to approve a fee waiver for livestock arena and auction barn at the fairgrounds to hold a multi-religion Christmas event contiguous on coming up with insurance for that.
And signing the agreement.
And signing the agreement.
Is there an amount of liability required?
It's on the form that she, she's, she has out there, yeah. It tells you exactly what you have to do.
Yeah, she can, she can give that to you.
Okay.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, community development, ordinance number 630, Scott Lyons.
Not sure if that'll stay. All right, ordinance 630, this is a request for a zoning map amendment in unincorporated county. It's just southwest of Tremonton City. So 7,900 west, approximately, and between 10,000 north and 10,400 north. The property is approximately 49.7 acres. It's currently unzoned, and the applicant is requesting that it be zoned RR1, rural residential, one acre. This came before you a few weeks back, and between, it went to the Planning Commission originally about a year, not quite a year and a half ago, and they recommended approval, and then it took some time, and by the time it came to you, the applicant had requested that one acre be removed, like the boundary of the zoning be changed by one acre.
Mm-hmm.
So you said, let's send it back to the Planning Commission, because what, it's changed between what they recommended and arriving here before you. So we took it back to the Planning Commission, it was re-noticed, another public hearing was held at that level. The Planning Commission reviewed it and has recommended approval with that modification. And so now it's coming back before you for your action.
So we're going to exclude that acre, is that right?
Yes.
That's part of it?
That's what the Planning Commission wants, recommended, correct?
That's what the applicant requested. So, so the Planning Commission, when they take an application, they, it's noticed, they review it based on what the applicant, applicant supplied to them. So that's what was reviewed by them and supplied to them, and they still, while they would love to include that acre in the zoning, it was requested that that acre be excluded from the zoning. They still feel that going from unzoned to something that has zoning in place is better than leaving it unzoned. So thus, they forwarded a recommendation of approval, even without that one acre being included.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number 630 on the zoning map amendment as presented by Scott Lyons.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Vincent and a second by Commissioner Perry to approve ordinance number 630 zoning map amendment. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item B.
So ordinance 633, this is a amendment to the text of the county land use code, section 6-1-240K, which is the development code for subdivisions specifically to irrigation systems. So this section of code replaces a smaller, out-of-date section of code. And this one was developed by one of our planning commissioners, Brandon East, did a fantastic job. He, he took the reins on this and started working on it. He worked with us as staff, he worked with the Bear River Canal Company, he worked with, brought it to the Planning Commission three separate times for discussion and improvements. And when we had our booth out at the fair for the ag protection areas, we also had it there to get any feedback that people may have there. So ultimately, the, this section of code now, it brings what's defined in state code as a water conveyance facility, so ditches, canals, subsurface drainage, like drain tiles, all those different features that convey water. It basically aligns our code with state code, and then also gives a couple additional things as far as owner declination for piping, different things like that, that basically it should both give the developer more clarity when they encounter, if they encounter ditches, drain tiles, different things like that, within or adjacent to their property, and also give the irrigator farmer peace of mind that the ditch they own that's not on their property, but is necessary to convey water to their property or off of their property, the function of that won't be damaged. So.
I like it. Good.
I, I appreciate what they've done, and all the effort. I know that you guys have put in this, and so I'd make a motion that we adopt ordinance 633 water conveyance facilities.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Commissioner Perry and a second by Commissioner Vincent to approve ordinance number 633 water conveyance facilities. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Scott.
Appreciate it, Scott.
Okay, item number 11. Hey, we're going to pass by, Gina's not here. Item number 12, Janica.
Okay, I'm here about our annual retirement incentive for our employees who are eligible to retire. In the past about 10 years, we have offered this retirement incentive. Basically, the premise of it is anyone who is eligible to retire has a voluntary option to choose to retire and receive a little bit of a payout for doing so, as sort of an incentive. I have the total amount of savings that it would be for the county if we were to allow this for next year. The dates would be January 1st, 16th, February 1st, 16th, or March 1st or 16th. And the total savings if everyone on the list went would be $421,239.65.
That's how much money we would save.
Yep, that's the savings if they all participated.
Right. Not that we want them all to retire, but if they chose to, that's something that's, there's a benefit in hiring new people, so.
Correct.
Okay. I'd make a motion that we accept this retirement incentive and allow it to go forward for this next year.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Perry and a second by Commissioner Vincent to approve the retirement incentive as proposed by Janica. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I guess we should have looked to see who's on that list, whether or not.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Here's my P A. column up there.
Okay. Okay. Item number 13 is public comment. Those wishing to make a public comment shall sign the comment rule and will be responsible for following the rules outlined in the county commission rules and procedures. Speakers will have one, three-minute opportunity to speak regardless of the number of items they wish to address. Speakers shall address their comments to the county. Speakers shall address their comments to the County Commission only. This is a time to be heard. There will not be a back-and-forth dialogue with commissioners. Speakers may file copies of their remarks or supporting information with the county clerk. The county clerk will make the information available to the County Commission. We have two today, the first being Deanna Hardy.
Deanna Hardy Brigham. During the recent budget hearing, it was stated that Box Elder County Commissioners would not receive an increase in salary, but would remain the same. According to changes in expenses and revenue for 2025, it shows each county commissioner received a $3,000 increase. The Box Elder Committee of Liberty opposes the increase for all elected representatives. Your constituents are struggling and need your help in reducing their property taxes. The average salary for a Box Elder County resident is $55,000, and those on fixed incomes is even less. The whole salary structure of our local government should be in line with the average salary of Box Elder County residents. And it was really hard to watch during the budget hearing, people pleading for you guys not to raise taxes, and then you raise taxes, and you give yourselves a very nice raise for everybody. Next topic, the Box Elder Committee of Liberty opposes the rural grant program. This program violates the Utah Constitution, Article 12, Section 20, "Free market system as state policy, restraint of trade and monopolies prohibited." It is the policy of the state of Utah that a free market system shall govern trade and commerce in this state to promote the dispersion of economic and political power and the general welfare of all people. Each contract combination in the form of trust or otherwise, or conspiracy in restraint of trade or commerce, is prohibited, except as otherwise noted, otherwise provided by statute. It is also prohibited for any person to monopolize, attempt to monopolize, or combine or conspire with any other person or persons to monopolize any part of trade or commerce. This rural grant program picks winners and losers, and it's using the people's tax dollars to operate this unconstitutional program. Again, we remind you of your oath of office to support, obey, and defend our U.S. and state constitutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next would be Fred Hayes.
Hi, Fred Hayes, Bear River Precinct. Thanks, Deanna. Frequent recurrence to fundamental principles is essential. I seek the interest of the commission, that each of you may see and recognize the multitude of vulnerabilities that exist in today's election structure. I appeal for a return to precinct-based, single-day voting with paper ballots counted by home precinct volunteers. Tallys from electronic machines mean nothing as they subvert the legitimate process of suffrage, and media messages from the state encouraging Utahns to trust in the election system are neither comforting nor convincing. Over 20,000 Utah ballots were thrown out of the November 2024 election based on signature issues. None of these 20,000 ballots would have been rejected with in precinct voting. In Utah, about 115 people fell into the already-voted whirlpool, most of them quite accidentally. Nevertheless, their votes were not counted. This violation of the right to suffrage would never have happened without mailed ballots and is uniquely attributable to mailed ballots. All my personal requests to see the cast vote records from the November 2020 election, the June 2024 election, and the November 2024 election have been denied. Cast vote records were always available to the public in legacy elections prior to the advent of electronic voting and even published. Why not now? Why weren't we allowed to see, why aren't we allowed to see into the electronic election system? Utah is currently being sued in federal court by J. Christian Adams Public Interest Law Firm for the violation of the National Voting Rights Act in regards to voting registration records. The suit filed on June 6th this year seeks access to the registration information as provided by law, but denied by Utah. I urge the commission to solicit the input of all legacy precincts to see if they don't prefer to retain their right to self-count their ballots on a single election day. What could be more important than to initiate a series of public meetings to receive and record input on this supra foundational issue? Will the commission begin discussions to organize an exhaustive, long-term, non-rushed set of public meetings to gather information from the precincts? Thank you for serving on the County Commission and providing an opportunity for me to speak.
Thank you, Fred. Okay, having no other forms, signed the forms. They weren't registered. I'll get them to you all here in a minute.
You ready to sign some, Tyler?
Sure.
Here, let me start signing those.
Thanks.
Sooner or later, they'll all make it back to the folder.
Why just slide over there not having anything to sign? So I thought I'd be giving some to sign.
There you go.
And like, not being at Christmas and not have a Christmas present, he was still...
That's right. We don't want you to miss out. Come on.
Thanks, Lee. Appreciate it.
Whatever we can do.
Need a signature on that?
No.
I don't think so. That's just information we have to have. We have to pass that back over to Tyler, and then we can sign those other ones right there that need to be signed. You may have to sign most of them. I think Steve has to sign this one, too. Oh, no, that's... So this was just yours, right? So that was just yours. Okay, you ready for a motion?
I am ready for a motion.
Make a motion to go into closed session to deal with litigation and a personnel matter.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Perry and a second by Commissioner Vincent to go into closed session for litigation and personnel matter. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries.